Morning. Tonight, we have three tabled matters on the agenda and four scheduled matters. We do have proof of legal publication from the Webster Herald that all items have been advertised. So before we can start, maybe we could stand up, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Catherine, could you take the role, please?
Sure. Mr. Barun?
Here.
Mr. DiNoto?
Here.
Mrs. Vollo?
Here.
Mr. DiMarco?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Howza?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here. The first item on the agenda has been tabled, and they've changed the front setback. So, Karen, could you read that into the record, please?
766 Ridge Road vestibule located at 766 Ridge Road. Applicant Andrew Kaptain is requesting an area variance to allow a 31-foot front setback where 75 feet is required, associated with the construction of an eight-foot by 6.5-foot front vestibule on a .25 acre parcel having SBL number 079.17-1-9, located in an CO commercial outdoor storage district under Section 225-19B/5A of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, Mr. Kaptain, you want to just review? We've heard it before, but it's been quite a while.
Oh, yeah, sure. So we have a dentist office on Ridge Road. The dentist office is having trouble with handicapped access to the waiting room. There's currently a stoop with an old flat roof above it down in front of the building. We would like to replace that with a front foyer or vestibule. This would allow handicapped access to the waiting room. On the front of that vestibule, there will be a ramp-type concrete sidewalk similar to the one that's there, just be elevated about 12 inches where it connects to the vestibule. So that existing foyer sticks out roughly five feet or so. So we want to come out six and a half feet. And we want to come across, I think it's eight.
Okay. We, the board discussed this quite a bit when you first appeared, and we didn't have a problem with the variance, but it was advertised incorrectly because we didn't have a, well, we didn't have a tie to the front setback on the survey map, so we couldn't, you know, determine exactly what variance required was going to be. Now, I'm doing the math, and maybe, maybe the other members of the board could do the math also, just to check me, but I'm seeing 30 and a half feet to the front. Now, the vestibule has to be six and a half, it can't be six, correct?
It should be six.
I hate to make you come back again.
Thank you.
You know, this is a, unfortunately, the survey doesn't show a tie to the point of that front porch, you show it each corner of the building. So it's 36.74 on one corner and 37.69, so I'm assuming in the center of the building, it's approximately 37 even, within tenths, okay? If you take six and a half off of it, then it's only 30 and a half. They advertise it as 31. So, I, typically, we have to go with what's advertised. Now, I don't, what do you think, Counselor, that, I mean, that's typical.
Talking about six inches?
Believe it or not.
Well, we'll see what Mr. DiMarco thinks.
Yeah, let's.
Can we push the limits a little bit in this instance and not really run afoul of anything in particular?
I mean, my position would be, I'd recommend to the board, I think, in terms of, you know, whether it be, you know, community opposition, interpretation of the quote, it's really, it's de minimis, I think, given the context of the application.
I agree, and not only that, we have no public opposition from this. Honestly, I can't see somebody saying, "Okay, okay, you're only 30 foot six instead of 31, I'm opposed to it." I mean, just.
It's unfortunate that, this is, I think, the second time in this application that the map hasn't been where it needs to be. I don't even think.
We, I just received this map. The only reason I'm late with this is because I just got this map tonight with this package, and I did the math, and that's how it, so we didn't have the map.
Yeah, well, the first meeting, we didn't have the numbers at all.
At all.
So we had to do something to deal with that. But this is, you know, a rounding error could account for the.
It's a half, half a foot, yeah. Is it going to be a concrete slab?
It's going to be a concrete slab, yes. Concrete foundation.
I could, I could suggest a little sleight of hand where you keep the foundation back six inches and let it hang over, because they measured the foundation.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, it's unfortunate that you're getting hung up on this technicality, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Because we have no opposition to the variance.
Right.
I just don't want to do something that someone might challenge in the future.
So the floor of the foyer is actually an extension of the sidewalk, if you look at it that way.
Any opinions here? Besides, I see Don's got his calculator out.
Yes, I do. Now, under the circumstances, I would move forward with this personally. By doing some math, the approximate setback to the center of that structure to the right away would be 37.21 feet. So six feet.
We're up by three tenths or four tenths.
Three tenths of a foot.
We're up by three tenths of a foot.
Just move it in three tenths of a foot, and let's deal with the 31 foot as advertised, in my opinion. Because we have to be to the dimension, the specific dimension. I'm sorry, it's, that's the old me coming from where Josh said.
No, I, I, I understand that question at all. I, I understand.
I guess Josh.
Is it going to be a wood floor in the vestibule?
Concrete.
Concrete, yeah. Well.
I would strongly recommend to go forward with the application tonight. I mean, the reality of it is, once we approve these things, you know, it may be closer, it may be farther away, you know, we're talking about three tenths, we're talking about three inches at this point. Three tenths is more.
Three tenths is actually a little bit more. Four inches is just, just much.
Very, could you, want you to read today applicant, how it's advertised and see if he can, he can construct it?
Well, that's what I, that's what I, I asked if you could cut it back four inches even.
Can't, can't liberate.
Or, or, or get something out, I'm sure. Or, or keep the block foundation back four inches and can't leave the floor over.
I could do that.
Let's, let's.
I could do that.
So what we're going to do is give you the variance for what was advertised.
Okay.
And then you could, you, you know, you're allowed a two-foot cantilever in Webster on a structure. So, you know, four inches is nothing. So if you could do that and still, you know, get, get the result you want, I hate to hold you up again.
Okay, that's fine. I can accept that.
Okay.
Okay, so, excuse me one more, is, is it, the owner is Timothy Egger, it's E-G-G, right?
Yes. Yes, E-G-G-E-R-T.
Okay, so that's incorrect on the survey as well. I'll make that change.
Okay. Oh, that is put E-N-G-E-R-T.
Okay, so, running through the standards, request is not out of character with the neighborhood, given the position of the relative buildings and the fact that it's a commercial district, it's not at all out of cases. These are houses that have been converted over, two offices as, you know, the last 30 years have gone forward. No detriment to nearby properties, it's not going to impact anybody at all there. Not achievable by any other method, it is the entryway, so any addition to the foyer would have to be there. It's not substantial. It's, it's a bit substantial, yes, but given the position of the existing building, there's no way around that. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or neighborhood. It is somewhat self-created, but again, because of the existence of the building well prior to this owner having it, not necessarily, not an undesirable change, it actually improves the handicapped access, which is desirable, so.
So, before you make a motion, let me, let me open this up to the public for public comment. So our call-in number is 872-7011. And Josh, did we have any emails or any other from the public with regard to this application?
No, no, we have not.
Okay, while we're waiting for, see if anybody calls in, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Section 617.5 of Environmental Code, make a motion for type two, type two action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll just give a, give a minute here or so for the, for the phone to ring. Actually, I kind of feel like, I get jealous, because I watch the planning board meetings, the phone rings and rings and rings. These meetings here, the phone's not been ringing, so I kind of feel like maybe we don't have an audience out there, maybe.
Do you feel reducted?
Be careful what you're saying, I'm sorry. All right, I honestly don't think anyone's going to call in on this. Nobody called last time, so that will close the public portion of the meeting. So if you wish to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a 31-foot front setback where 75 foot is required at 766 Ridge Road, applicant Andrew Kaptain representing the owner, to construct an eight-foot by 6.5-foot front vestibule on a quarter-acre parcel having SBL number 079.17-1-9, located in a commercial outdoor storage district under Section 225-19, Section B subsection 5 subsection A of the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. DiNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Barun?
Aye. Okay, so have your variance? You understand what we were talking about as far as setbacks and so on?
I understand, yes.
Okay, good. Just a couple of conditions. I know you're going to build right away, but I have to say this, the variance is good for one year of meaningful construction, and you have to stop by the building department to get your building permit, right? And thank you.
Okay, very good.
Have a good evening. Good night, David.
You too. You know, maybe Don juggling on a unicycle would get more viewers.
Second tabled item.
474 Webster Road Edition. Located at 4, I'm sorry, 494 Webster Road Edition. Located at 494 Webster Road, applicants Keith and Beth Simpson are requesting an area variance to allow a 50-foot front setback where 85 feet is required, associated with an addition to the existing single-family dwelling on a .5 acre parcel having SBL number 065.01-1-2, located in an R1 single-family residential district under Section 225-9B5A1 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. You want to just run through your project again for us? Now, just for, for the benefit of the people watching, I, I had to recuse myself last meeting because I was going to bid on this job, but we've sent, the owner called me and said, "You're no longer bidding on my job." Thanks, Eric. So anyways, and the reason for that is that would have been a conflict of interest had I heard that application. So go ahead and proceed, and I just want to explain.
Questions about what I, we're asking for the variance of 20 by 23 on the west side of the house, and it comes into the, allow for the variance piece of it. We had a question on the aspect of, can we go to the back of the house for its accommodating two-bedroom, two-bath with it? So we had Pro Construction look into that little piece of it, and as you read through it, it shows it's really additional, plus having to move the air conditioner, the sewer lines, the furnace lines, as well as there's already addition on to the back that would also change the style of the hip roof, we have to go into some type of gable roof. That addition that's there now already has a chimney on it, so I don't know how high we have to bring that piece, and we're going to have to add two chimneys in order to clear.
So what, has anything changed since the last presentation?
No, this is, we're still asking for it to come up on the roadside of the house for that, and allow for the variance for the addition. If we, the question was, can we go to the back of the house, and that would be additional, at least $35,000 extra to add to it, as well as changing the whole look of the house, going from a hip roof to some type of gable roof, and for that span, it would bring it up a lot higher.
Okay, now I understand. This is showing us the additional, the additional cost to put the addition on the back of the house.
I don't believe that coming out to the front of the house keeps them with the neighborhood, keeps that, it looks like all the neighbors have hip roofs, ranch houses. It's a cute little area, I think, there.
The request last time was, what would it cost to put it in the back instead of the front? That was the only thing they asked us to.
Have the dimensions changed at all, or?
No.
Well, we need to have some conversation here. Hi. I didn't really hear everything the board, you know, had to say at the last meeting, so I, I heard some of it, but I didn't hear everything that was.
I think the board asked for, for reasons why the addition that they're proposing on the front of the house could not be on the back of the house. There was a couple of things that they, that they listed, there was terrain issues.
Terrain issues, because the back of the house, it does go up quite a bit.
That was.
And then any addition piece of it.
Sewer line, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sewer line.
Some, some other things that they mentioned. So we actually asked as, to, for verification of all the things, all the reasons why they couldn't put it on the back of houses as opposed to where they're, where they're proposing Yeah, so the, the difference in costs of $35,000 would seem to be substantial, and from, I, I checked the site out a second time with the view to the back of the property and looking at that, especially if you're putting a full basement in instead of crawl space in the relocation of the sewer line, and the fact that it's a macerator pump instead of a normal gravity feed makes it a lot more difficult.
I'd had the same line of questions when I went and visited the site again, paying more attention to the grade behind the house, that I didn't notice the first time that I visited, or didn't, it just didn't appear significant to me. But looking at the slope of the yard, from the rear of the yard to the front, your additional cost doesn't really even consider the additional excavation that would be needed to, to deal with the change in topography to be able to have the whole addition still above ground and on a single floor as well. So, the alternate actually, it answers all of the questions that I had when I visited the site.
Yeah, with respect to the hip roof coming in, if you look at the addition we put on our house, because of the way the two sides of the L come together with the family room coming out on two sides, they, we didn't go with tying everything together at the maximum peak, and so the roof over the family room is quite a lower pitch than one might have wanted, and I'll tell you right now, I get a lot of exercise in the winter shoveling that roof to prevent the ice dams, so.
From, from a practical standpoint, I'm, I'm looking at putting that in the back, and there's a hip off the back already, so if you add this to that hip, the pitch would be, it would be an ice problem, because you have two, two valleys coming together, so it's a structural issue, you know, it's a structural issue. I think, I think one of the questions is, if you do add on to the front, is that the minimal, the 20 feet is the minimal dimension you need to accomplish what you need to accomplish?
We did the crowd draw a piece of it, and they mentioned that there's still going to be small bedrooms and baths in it, but that's about the smallest we can go with
Well, I thank the applicant for providing us this additional information, because I remember at that first, very first meeting, I had a lot of questions in regards to the cost. And because of the amount that you're looking to encroach into a front setback in the R1 district, I like to protect R1 sewing district as far as the setbacks, and Route 250 is a major roadway, really don't want to establish any precedent. I think with this additional information, that really helps me decide on your application. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I looked at the floor plan, and the bedrooms are minimal. They're minimal.
Are they outrageous?
I noticed the house, two or three doors to the south, it was an older brick farmhouse, and that's probably only 40 to 50 feet from the road.
No, if you go to the house of this way, or to the house of that, you're both closer.
We ran in this a little bit on Holt Road, we okayed a, a variance for closer front setback, and sure enough, the old farmhouse that was next door was only 30 to 40 feet from it. The older farmhouses were built quite a bit closer to the road, long before the zoning ordinances were in place, so in that respect, it's not out of character with the neighborhood. It won't, it's not going to stick out like a sore thumb, you know, in front of all the other houses on that road. This meeting is open to the public for comment, but the phone number here is 872-7011, if anyone wishes to comment for or against this application.
To probably make clear that the, the document that the board members are referring to, which is, was just provided this evening, but it is dated August 9th from Pro Construction, which separates out the rear addition costs. It's about 40% more expensive than what was proposed.
So we'll make this, this document part of the record?
Yes.
So while we're waiting for the phone to ring, if anybody calls, I'll, I'll make a motion of, pursuant to 617.5 of Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't think the phone's going to ring. I don't think you have anybody to post, so. Would somebody like to run through the standard?
Yeah, I'll run through them.
We asked several questions of the applicant at the last meeting, and they followed through with the reasons why this addition could not be moved to the backside of the house. There is some substantial cost increase, there's a conflict with sewer line, and there's some grating issues that go along with that. Is the, there, is for the, there's no undesirable change to the essential neighborhood with the, with the addition on the front of the house. We asked you a bunch of questions, if there was any other remedies, and no location you could put that addition. The answer's resounding, no, you couldn't put it anywhere else and achieve what you're trying to achieve. The neighborhood in general is, is not, the request is not significant, because there's, there's some houses that are built in the area that have the setback that you're requesting, you know, once the addition is, is placed on the, from the house. I don't think there's any other way that you could do what you're trying to do, you know, based on the, the answers that you, that you gave us, and the, the, all of them, all of these variance requests are self-created, but in this, in this case, I don't think you had another alternative to, to build your addition where, where you wanted to build it. Any, anybody else want to, anything?
No, and I'll just reiterate what Mr. DiMarco said, we, they provided us costs of putting addition on the rear of the house, and that does show a substantial expense to $35,000 to move to that location. Not only that, it wouldn't be as good, the roof structure would be hot, it would be problematic, so.
Yeah, as you've got, there's grating issues, there's sewer, sewer line conflict, substantial cost increase, and roof construction issues that go along with it. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve an area variance at 494 Webster Road to allow a 50-foot set, front setback where 85 feet is required, associated with an addition to the existing single-family dwelling on .5 acre parcel having SBL number 065.01-1-2, located in an R1 single-family residential district under Section 225-9B5A1 of the code of the town of Webster for applicants Keith and Beth Simpson.
I'll second that.
Hey, Mr. DiNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Barun?
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Okay, like always, couple, couple of conditions. The variance is good for one year, meaningful construction has to begin within one year. I know you're going to start right away, and. I know you're going to start right away, and also you need to get a building permit, so.
Yes.
All in debt. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with your project.
Appreciate it.
Now, five eighty-nine has requested to table to the next meeting. Do I need to read it into the record, or can I just make a motion to table?
She, she didn't change anything, right?
I don't believe she did, but she just asked to table it to the eight twenty-five meeting instead of tonight.
Oh, okay, so she wants to reconsider, or consider.
So I'll make a motion to table this application to the next meeting, which is August twenty-fifth.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, so on to our first scheduled matter.
Number next, eleven fifty-three Bay Road fence, located at eleven fifty-three Bay Road, ex- applicant Jennifer Vega is requesting area variances to allow three-foot side setbacks where ten feet is required associated with the installation of a six-foot tall shadow box fence, shadow box fence on a point-six acre parcel having SPL number zero nine three point zero six dash one dash ten located in an MHR medium-high residential district under section two two five dash seventy-seven C of the Code of the Town of Webster.
They're not here, as is number two. So.
The first one, Bay Road fence is not here?
Not here.
Oh, Bay Road's not?
Present, not here.
Okay.
So remove it to Lake Road and Creek.
Oh, okay.
Go back around to the issue.
Okay, very good.
All right. Let me reread. Sixteen oh eight Lake Road, located at sixteen oh eight Lake Road, applicant Matthew Noack is requesting an area variance to allow a ten-foot side setback where fifteen feet is required to legalize a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence in conjunction with the construction of a twenty-six foot by twenty-eight foot garage addition on a six-point-nine acre parcel having SPL number zero three six point zero four dash one dash twelve located in a large lot, single, large lot, single-family residential district under section two two five dash twelve B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Can I tell us about your project?
I get to talk now? Okay. I'm the homeowner, I'm Peter Kringshtein.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Peter Kringshtein, K O I N G S T E I N. My contractor, Matt Noack, put the application in, he couldn't be here. So I own the home, which is on a seven acre parcel, it's a long rectangle, and the home, which was built in the fifties, the east side of the house is eleven to twelve feet from the lot line, so the northeast corner of the house is twelve feet, and the southeast corner is eleven feet. So what I'd like to do is on the east side of the house, add a twenty-six by twenty-eight foot garage, which will come in eight feet from the east side of the house, but because the house is not perfectly parallel with the lot line, as it moves toward the road, it will, it may encroach closer to the line, so it may be sixteen or seventeen or eighteen feet from the line instead of nineteen or twenty feet. The garage, if I move it further to the west, it's going to encroach on my kitchen, and if I do it the other way, if I turn it the other way, I have to move my driveway.
But the location of the garage is still eight feet further from the setback line than the existing houses at this point?
So, right, so the southeast corner of my house is ten feet point six inches from the lot line, and the garage starts further eight feet away from the lot line, but because the house is like this and the line is like this, as the garage is built, the southeast corner of the garage is going to be slightly closer to the lot line.
What's that, what is that addition on the right end of the house? Is that living space?
I'm sorry?
The addition that's on the right end of the house?
Yeah, that's, there's a master bedroom in there.
Okay, it was added on, obviously, but.
Yeah, before I, before I owned the house.
Yeah, long before, yeah, that looked like it was quite.
I don't know if, I don't know if the, the whole parcel was divided because the lot lines, the house was built in the fifties and the lot line's very close to where the east side is.
Now, the garage is only, what, twenty-four feet deep? It's not very deep, if I remember, if I saw that correctly?
Twenty-six plus.
Oh, excuse me, twenty-six feet deep.
Yeah.
It was quite a heavy hedge road to the right, I couldn't see anything through it.
No, there is a four-foot fence behind it to the east.
Tell you what, let me open this up to the public while we all digest this. If anybody wishes to speak for or against this application, call in numbers eight seven two seven zero one one. I don't really see, I mean, I mean, we could, we could press the applicant to make the garage two feet narrow, but to what end?
It doesn't encroach.
Yeah, he's already closer to the lot line with the other part of the house.
And it's, it's not an oversized garage at all when you include the mudroom into it.
Yeah, it's only twenty-six by twenty-six, that's, that's just a nice two-car garage. I do see what he means, if you pull the garage away from the line, it does block the kitchen window, there's like a four, four-section window, and then they'd be staring right at the garage out that window.
The only question I would have is for, for configuration, is there, is there a reason why the proposed addition can't be located on the west side of the structure?
Um, you could, it doesn't, it just.
Because you have that, you're, you've got a cul-de-sac, that you've got a circular driveway at the end, so for function, for function, do they actually be functional? Could, could propose?
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it, I guess if you look at the house, it looks like it would fit, but what's on that side of the house doesn't fit with a garage being on that side of the house. The east side of the house has a small corridor between the dining area and the master bedroom. It sort of is what makes the most sense in terms of where it should go in the house.
So the entryway is more conducive to the garage being on, on that side of the structure?
On the east side, right.
Now, were the two bedrooms on the, on the west side of the house?
There, there's a master on the east side of the house, on the west side, there are, there are three separate bedrooms.
Yeah, so you want the garage proximal to your kitchen, so you could carry your groceries in and your mudroom and so on and that.
Right.
You want to come in better.
It just flows better.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I don't think anyone's calling in, so we'll close the public portion. Do we have any, do we have any write-ins, Josh? No? Okay. Okay, pursuant to section six seventeen point five of environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I, I don't see any, any negatives to this, the gentleman wants to add a garage, that's the logical place to put a garage, so that when you enter, you're entering the mud, into the mudroom area near the kitchen. It's quite a bit further from the lot line than the existing home, which may or may not have an existing variance for that, I don't know, but I don't see any, any negatives to that. So, it's a, it's a unique, unique area, all those lots are like a quarter of a mile deep from the lake road down to, to the lake, and you really can't see the neighbors on either side, so there's really no detriment to anyone. There's no physical or environmental impact to the site, it's, it's, there's really no negatives. It's somewhat self-created, but the house is what it is, and he's trying to improve the home with what he's got, so it's not, that's not a big issue, so. Anybody have anything?
You want to add it up?
No.
Sit so far back.
So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to grant a side setback area variance, allowing a ten-foot side setback where fifteen feet is required to legalize, to legalize a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence in conjunction with the construction of a twenty-six by twenty-eight foot garage addition on a six-point-nine acre parcel, excuse me, having SPL number point zero three six point zero four dash one dash one two, excuse me, located in the large lot, single-family residential district under section two twenty-five dash twelve B of the Code of the Town of Webster and sixteen oh eight Lake Road.
Second. Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Howson?
Aye.
Okay, you have your variance of one year meaningful construction, you have to start within one year, or you have to reapply for the variance, and you need a building permit, so stop by the building department, or have your contractor stop by the building department for the, for the permit.
Thank you.
Congratulations, have a good evening.
Thirteen oh one Mill Road.
Mill Creek.
Or Mill Creek. All right. Thirteen oh one Mill Creek Run Shed, located at thirteen oh one Mill Creek Run, applicant Rod Cutler is requesting an area variance to allow a six-foot setback where fifteen feet is required associated with the placement of a ten-foot by fourteen-foot utility shed on a point-five acre parcel having SPL number zero six five point thirteen dash two dash eight nine located in an R3 single-family residential district under section two two five dash four eight of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about your project.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
State your name, please, and just tell us a little bit about your project.
Okay, my name is Rod Cutler, I live at thirteen oh one Mill Creek Run, and I have a ten by fourteen foot shed I want to put in the backyard, six foot off the fence line rather than, than the required fifteen feet, okay?
And why, why do you want to keep it that close, close to the fence rather than?
Because two-thirds of my lawn is like road frontage and I can't use it for anything, and the, the rear yard is rather small, and if I put the shed like fifteen feet off the fence line, it'll encroach towards the middle of the lawn, the rear lawn.
We have another corner lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I noticed some pretty large trees there, is it a tenement between those trees?
Yeah, I want to put it between the trees.
Are you going to be parallel with the lot line, or are you going to, it looks like it's square with the road rather than the lot line, or?
No, it would be parallel with the.
No, with the fence?
The lot line, yeah.
Okay.
Or the fence.
There is also a slope, if you move this fifteen feet from the lot line, the shed would end up on a slope where the rear of the yard is flat to a point, and then about twenty feet in, it starts a rather somewhat steep grade for a suburban lot like that, and then it slopes down to the level of the neighbor's yard, so if you put the shed at that fifteen foot mark, the whole thing would be sitting at an angle unless you brought the rear end up about eighteen inches.
Yeah, I was going to say about two feet, which, and the other, the other concern I had with that is then you've got to bring some fill in, which, since it's so much lower to the neighbor's yard at that point, I would be reluctant to add fill, which would potentially cause a water issue on the neighbor that's Lot Five on Holly Road, which is the neighbor that would be behind us.
Do you have any thoughts on?
Well, I was at the site and talked to the applicant, I believe it was this morning, and there's a large tree which both of us stood by. I, I thought the shed could be better suited to the east of, where it's shown on the, on the map, east of the tree also, staying out of the low area, and that, that area was somewhat flat, and could comply with the appropriate setbacks. Obviously, the applicant had some concerns because he wanted to have some visibility because there's some shrubs which sort of hide the location that I would prefer that to be located in, and I certainly understand from a safety aspect why you would want that there. But, you know, we always look for other alternatives, but is there, is there another possibility to lessen the need for variance? That, that's where I would prefer it.
When you, when you say safety, what are you referring to?
Visibility, in case somebody breaks into the shed, he certainly wants to be able to, be able to view there from this house, anywhere in this house, to make sure that, you know, somebody's not breaking into the shed.
Correct.
If it's any different from what I said, please feel free to change.
No, no, you're right, you're right. Yeah, there's a great big huge shrub, it would be like blocking the front of the shed in the corner, and it'd be like rather hard to see from the house, so.
All right, well, this meeting is open to the public, anyone wishing to speak for or against the application, call, it's eight seven two seven zero one one.
And so, Don, you're, you're thinking that by locating it more to the southeast corner of the lot, you could get it fifteen by fifteen without a lot of difficulty?
Yeah, yes, other than maybe trimming that shed back, the hedge back to, to get the visibility that the owner wants, there again, for obvious reasons.
Well, another thing too, having it in that back corner, it would bring it out like really far too with a fifteen-foot setback, the corners of the shed.
That, that's correct, we looked, we looked at putting it in the, tweeting it.
Yeah.
So it would, it would face your house, give you that visibility that you're looking for?
Yeah, but the one side, but then you would have to move the one side of the shed closer to the, the fence line in order to get that. I wouldn't mind having it in the corner, I looked at it, but I would like to turn, turn it around more, have the one side like six foot off of the fence line.
So, placing the, the southeast corner of the shed, if I look at it fifteen feet from that east fence, um.
I believe you're speaking of the south, the south fence, correct?
Uh, no, actually, it's the east fence.
And, and then if I put the shed parallel to the back of the house, then that would bring the one corner closer than the fifteen feet?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, yes.
Well, are you talking about putting towards the corners and keep it fifteen feet from each line, or is it still going to require a variance?
I think it would still require a variance.
Well, that's my point, if, if you push it the way, the way, that's kind of an acute angle, so when you push the shed into the corner, you're pushing both corners of the shed closer to lot. into the corner, you're pushing both corners of the shed closer to lot line.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you kept it 15 feet from both of those, that would be quite a distance to the corner.
Well, it would be out towards the middle of the yard even more so then, you know, with the corners 15 feet out. Because of the angle of the backyard, the one corner, it isn't a 90-degree angle, you know?
I don't think anybody's going to call this all closed, the public portion. We don't have any written comment, do we, Josh? No, okay. I don't... Personally, with the fence there and the trees that are there and so on, I don't see a big issue with the 6-foot side setback. Is 6 the minimum you could live with?
Uh, yeah. I want it clean behind the shed, too, leaves and stuff like that.
Well, yeah, I was looking for more than that, less. More setback, not less. We try and minimize variances whenever possible, you know?
Well, I could do 7 feet, you know? Wouldn't kill me.
Okay. I am being an odd lot again. That's where most of our variances come in, whether it's corner lots, odd lots, small lots, oddly shaped lots, you know, that's most of what we see for variances, because if somebody has a, you know, big open lot, there's no need for...
Yeah, I got limited places here to put a shed because of the corner, the corner lot. Like everything's front yard, you know?
Would somebody like to run through standards?
Have we read through? Well, I think we've... Corner lots are definitely problematic as far as having two front setbacks and very, very... Most of the time, the variance requests we get are... A lot of times they're corner lots. We've read through several questions. The answers you gave are... Suffice me. I mean, I don't think it's an undesirable change for the essential nature of the neighborhood. We ran through a couple proposals for other locations. Did you amend your variance request to 7 feet?
No, I just said 6 feet.
It's still 6 feet?
Yeah. It was an arbitrary number I just picked, so 6 feet. I just wanted to be able to get behind the shed to pick up branches and clean and stuff.
No, my point is if you're amending your requests, you should make a note of it so that that's what we're going to act on. It's advertised for 6, but it...
I would prefer 6.
6 feet, okay. Sheds are difficult anyways. I mean, we usually look to see if there's any obstructions, why it can't be, you know, in location. 15 feet, especially on a corner lot, is definitely difficult to achieve. I think you gave answers for why the shed is proposed in the area that it's proposed on the sketch. We didn't get any phone calls, no public comments, so I don't think it's a detriment to any other of your neighbors. I don't think it's environmental... I don't think it's a problem with the area where you want to put it. As I said, corner lots are... I lived in a corner lot once. I said I would never buy a corner lot ever in my lifetime again.
I said the same.
For all these reasons. Our variance requests are self-created, but, you know, you want to put a shed in, and it's a very archy plot. It's not square, and I think the location that you have it in 6 feet is something that we have granted numerous times in the past, so I don't think it's a problem where you want it. So...
Before you...
Yes.
I don't know if we were just going to make a motion. Before you do, pursuant to 617.5 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for type 2 secret.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve an area variance to allow a 6-foot setback where 15 feet is required at 1301 Mill Creek Run for applicant Rod Cutler. It's associated with the placement of a 10-by-14 utility shed on .5-acre parcel having SPL number 065.13-2-89, located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-48 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
I'll second.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Nay.
Mr. Howson?
Nay.
You have the three votes for variance, so just two conditions. You have one year for meaningful construction, and you need a building permit to install the shed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I might...
You need a build... You have to stop by the town hall for a building permit to install the shed.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thanks. Have a good day.
You, too. Good lot of you.
Good night. Two more?
Was the knucklehead application rescinded because it was previously approved?
Well, it didn't require a variance.
Commercial properties do not require...
Okay.
Have to comply with it. I thought I had read that somewhere. We had the other application for fence on Jordan?
Duran.
Duran?
Oh, Duran, right.
Is that coming back, then? Josh?
They didn't comply with the state's super area.
Okay.
Number two is here.
All right. Bear with me. 292 Beechwood Crescent Porch Edition. Located at 292 Beechwood Crescent, applicant David Walderek is requesting an area variance to allow a 40-foot front setback where 50 feet is required, associated with a porch and kitchen addition on a .44-acre parcel, having SPL number 078.06-2-14, located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-11B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. If you could identify yourself for the record and tell us part of your project.
Can you come through, Mike? Pull down your mask. Thank you.
You can take your mask off, so we can hear you perfect.
Hi, I'm Karen McCarthy. I live at 292 Beechwood Crescent.
And I'm David Walt Eric. I'm representing Karen. What we're looking for is to be able to basically build a 7-foot, a 20-foot porch onto her existing house, and the existing house is an existing non-conforming structure. It's at 47.5... I'm sorry.
45.7.
45.7 feet. And the house right now is a small Cape Cod, and Karen was looking to expand the living spaces in her house. She's expanding her kitchen and her family room. And the porch is basically the front extrusion into the front setback. And again, the porch is 7 feet deep by 20 feet wide.
Why not 5?
A little more room to be able to enjoy the space. The 7 feet includes a foot of step in the front as well. So, it's actually 6.
Okay, porch is 6, and one step is... Okay, I see. Now, there is a stoop out front now that's out 4 feet.
Yeah.
Concrete stoop that's...
That's correct.
Probably about 4 feet wide.
And I think as I looked over the plan here, I think there is an error in the number of the 40-foot .5. If you... If the existing house is 45.7, and if we go out 7 feet, that would bring it to the relief requested for 11.3 rather than 9.5. But we're still asking for the 7-foot. That hasn't changed.
We get a lot of branch requests for front porches, and there's only one place to put a front porch, and that's on the front of the house.
I'm sorry?
It says only one place to put a front porch, and that's on the front, right?
My house is very quaint right now, and we've done everything we could to keep that style.
Keep the wall, yeah. 6 feet's not excessive for a front porch. We put a couple chairs on it and be able to walk by. A 4-foot porch is worthless. If you put a couple chairs on it, you can't get by it. So, 6 feet's, you know, probably small reasonable size for width on the porch. The way the road curves away, I actually looked like the house to the right was closer to the road, and that's why I couldn't tell because it was on a curve. But visually, it looks as if your house is backed further than the one to the right for some reason, just because of the way the road curves. So, I don't think it has a... It's not in a straight line with other houses where that porch is going to project. It's on a curve, which actually softens the look of it. The other additions are nothing required for that. Now, it states that there's a 50-foot... Okay, they got 50-foot required, but none of these homes were built at a 50-foot front setback. They're all 40 to 45 feet in that range there. It was just the way that neighborhood was built, what, 60 years ago or whatever it was, 60, even more than that.
Closer to 70 now.
Yeah.
I don't particularly have a problem with the porch, but we're advertised for a 40-foot front setback, and we're looking at 39, and that's kind of... We're off by more than 4 inches this time.
You're going to have to cantilever it.
Yeah, well, what about the step? I mean, I see... I've seen some situations where the front step is part of the structure, and sometimes it's... It depends on the surveyor measures to it. I mean, is it a concrete step? So, technically, that's part of the structure.
No, looking at the survey map, it's to the corner of the house, not to the stoop. Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's some inconsistency in the way the surveyors treat that. Technically, it should go to the stoop, because the stoop has a foundation under it. But, yeah, a lot of times they go to the, you know, to the corner of the house. So, there's some inconsistency. What Mr. Snyder's saying is that technically, it was... It should have been advertised for less footage than it was. I don't particularly think the board has a problem with the variance. It has to go to a vote, of course, but we really should probably table it, as much as I hate to tell you that, re-advertise it, and come back because, like Eric said, it's more than... We did one where it was just a matter of a couple of inches in the contract. It was going to cantilever out to Florida to help out with that.
Let me make the dimensions work. To make the dimensions work that it was advertised for. He was going to make it the first tabled item that we talked about today. So, we talked about what it was advertised for, and he said it was going to work to make the dimensions work.
Yeah.
This is 2 feet.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's 2 feet.
Yeah, the first one, we made a couple suggestions that he could build it and still comply.
It's 40 feet... It's 40 feet, 40 and a half feet, not taking in the account the step and a foot of the actual addition. I mean, that, to me, if this 7, that, it should be advertised for 38. Or it's 37, isn't it?
Yeah. It's substantial.
So, you see what we're talking about on that?
It's actually 38.7.
Right.
That's what I came up with.
Yeah, you bet I was going at 38.
So, if it was advertised for 38.7, we could proceed. If it was more, you know, if it was going to setback farther, we could proceed, but the variance is actually greater than what is advertised for.
However, it was... You know, the request for a 7-foot porch was the issue, the 7 by 20. So, I mean, even though that number is off from what was advertised, it's... The basic premise was a 7 by 20 advertisement.
No, I understand that.
But the variance is to a certain dimension, David. Yeah? It's to a front setback, a particular dimension, and that's the issue.
Yes, the front setback that we're going to state, for the record, as far as the variance is concerned, we're going to state the front setback that's required, and that's going to be the variance. So, I'm inclined to suggest, you know, that you just table, and we'll re-advertise it properly. And I know it's two weeks, but then you won't have an issue with it in the future. It just makes sense to do it properly. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, because this is significant enough that when you go to sell the house eventually, the surveyor's going to come in and do a survey and go, "Oh, that's not in the right place." And now, we're back in for another variance because of a 2-foot.
Yeah. The other thing I would do is if it's 38. something, make it 38. Because if you get three different surveyors in there, they're going to vary by a tenth one way or another. I know they are. I've seen it happen. So, even with their space age instruments, they do vary depending on where they use control. So, would you like to just table? Let's do this properly. I know it's a couple weeks of time for everyone.
We'll table it.
Okay. So, the applicant's requesting table, so I'll make a motion to table. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, but let's do it properly, and it won't haunt you in the future.
So, what does that mean? It has to be re-advertising?
No, no cost to you, no reapplication. We'll just re-advertise it for 38 feet. 38 feet. Okay, and then you come back the next meeting, and we'll, you know, we'll pick up where we left off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one's here? Okay, apparently, one of the applicants hasn't shown up tonight, so hopefully, we'll call to reschedule for the next meeting. So, I guess...
Should I make a motion to table that to the...
Okay. All right, well, that concludes tonight's meeting. Thanks for watching.